Livonia City Council, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Laura Toye?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toye. All right, so this meeting sets the agenda for the 1,988th regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, March 11th, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. We do not have any council absence, we have everybody in attendance. I'm going to move right into audience communication. So the council has set aside 30 minutes for audience communication for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any audience communication? Seeing none, we are going to move on to council announcements. Council? Wow, all right, I'm going to record that, okay. So moving on from that, we're going to move right into the study agenda. Starting with new business, number one waiver petition from the Planning Commission requesting waiver use approval to construct an 18,478 square foot religious tempo and gazebo on the property at 28875 West Seven Mile Road located on the southeast corner of Seven Mile and Maplewood Street. Mr. Toramina, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is a request to build a new temple at Sri Sirti Sai Baba, which is located on the south side of Seven Mile Road, approximately midway between Middle Belt and Inglester Roads. This is the site of the former Galilean Baptist Church School that was constructed in the mid-1950s and then was converted to a Hindu temple in 2008 after a fire destroyed the sanctuary in 2004. Also on the site, our storage building as well as a single-family home, both of those structures will be removed as part of this project. The main parcel is roughly seven and a half acres, has 632 feet of frontage on Seven Mile Road, and it also fronts on Maplewood Street, a residential side street, and there is about 400 feet of frontage on that street. The zoning is RUF Rural Urban Farm, which treats religious institutions as a waiver use. Surrounding the property are mostly single-family homes or a few commercial properties or businesses along Seven Mile Road. The existing temple, as you can see from the aerial photograph, is located in the northwest corner of the site with parking to the south and east. The structure, the temple would remain during the, throughout the entire construction process. The new temple would be built in the southwest corner of the property. It would be set back about 230 feet from Seven Mile Road and 92 feet from Maplewood. Access would be from two driveways along Seven Mile. There is a driveway on Maplewood, but that would be gated and used for emergency purposes only. The temple's main entrance and lobby would be on the east end of the building. The building would have two levels, each about $11, $18,000 square feet, for a total of 36,000 square feet of usable floor area. The overall dimensions of the building are roughly 157 feet in length by 121 feet. The main level, as you can see from this photo, would contain the main prayer hall, which is located here. Adjacent to that is an idol room. There's a hallway that wraps around the perimeter of both of these rooms and along the outer portions of the building are several rooms that are accessory to the use. And then the lower level, the main room there, is the multipurpose room next to utility and storage, and several classrooms again would wrap around the perimeter of that space. The architecture of the building, as you can see here, is characteristic of a traditional Hindu temple. It has several ornate features, archways, overhangs, and domes. Primary building materials would include blocks, burnished blocks, excuse me, brick veneer as well as fiberglass. Average height of the structure would be 23 to 30 feet. There are four styles of domes on this building, the tallest of which is about 76 feet in height. That would be located at the west end of the building above the idol room. Four other domes are located on top of the building, two at the west end and then one at the east end, as well as one above a gazebo, which is directly across from the temple's main address. And we'll show you some additional photos that give you a better understanding of the design of the building. Just as a comparison, the dome at St. Mary's Basilica is about 65 feet in height, and the bell tower there is 75 feet, so the height of the structure is relatively consistent. One thing I will point out with St. Mary's structures, the grade drops severely on that property, so those structures actually appear taller, especially when viewed from the north. The required parking in this case is 225 spaces. The site plan shows 303 spaces, so they meet the parking requirement. And in fact, the Planning Commission in approving this project is recommending that some of the parking be landbanked, and the temple has agreed to make that change on the plan. The plans include fully detailed landscaping plans. In terms of stormwater management, going back to the site plan, that would be handled in an open basin system, which is in the southeast corner of the property. There are two parts of this basin, very characteristic of what we see on large developments. There's a fore bay that will hold a couple of feet of water, and then there's the main holding pond adjacent to that. Now, these basins have been situated on the back part of this property without interfering with the existing woods that is located along the south and the east side of that part of the property. Other issues reviewed and addressed by the Planning Commission was adding more brick to the building that has been done and is apparent on these renderings that I'll show you. Modifying the site lighting, so they've requested that the lights on the property be either dimmed or turned off after 10:00 PM, I believe. Restricting access from Maplewood Street. The original plan showed full access coming from the residential side street. And working with our fire department, they're recommending that that entrance be maintained, but be restricted either with an OX box or a locked gate. And the temple has agreed to that. And then the question of the removal of the existing temple upon completion of the new temple. They would like to keep the temple in place for up to five years after the certificate of occupancy for the main level of the new temple to allow time for them to complete the finishes on the basement level. But the Planning Commission has limited that to two years. So with that, Mr. President, I will be happy to answer any questions. I'll show you some additional renderings of the structure as we go through that.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Mr. Jolly?
Is the petitioner here? Is there, do you mind coming? I just have a couple of questions and a couple of comments as well. What's your name, sir?
My name is Gassan Abdnou from JV and Associates. I'm the architect on the project, and I can answer any questions you have.
Okay, and who's the gentleman to your side?
This is Prasag Bisabathani. I'm part of the construction committee in the temple.
Okay, so gentlemen, just out of curiosity, how big is the congregation?
So we have about 615 members. But typically, our major service day is Thursday, and typically we have about 500 people that show up from 9:00 in the morning to 9:00 in the evening. So at any given time, right now, we have about maximum capacity on a Thursday. He's about 150 to 200 in the temple.
Okay, you know, so this is, you know, oftentimes we have a lot of critique in terms of architecture from people up here in regards to developments. And, you know, I don't know what, if anything, we could critique in regards to a house of worship like this. This is, it's beautiful, it adds a different element to Livonia. I'm happy to see that your congregation is making an investment in the property. This is going to look a whole lot better than the current site. And, you know, I'll just go on record and I'll say I wish you the best here, and thank you for choosing to invest in Livonia. I will note as well, I think your congregation, although I have not had an opportunity to interact with your congregation myself too closely, I've heard nothing but good things in terms of efforts you've tried to do for the community as well. So thank you for that, and thank you for being a good neighbor, and I'll leave the balance of the comments to my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your kind words.
Councilman Donavich?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening. Appreciate it. I'll echo my colleague's comment. This is a pretty unique building, and it looks very beautiful. It'll look nice to see in person. To Mr. Toramina, can you let me know where the dumpster enclosure is on this plan?
I will let the architect respond to that.
Can you show me the site plan?
I apologize here. I was getting, I was teeing this up and getting it ready for the video that I know I want to show.
I just want to confirm that it's the consistent material of the building?
Oh, absolutely. We're matching the brick and the stone and the block.
Great, awesome.
So it's actually, we'll be matching the material.
Great, great. We'll move on then to Mr. Toramina. I know you talked about removing some of that parking from the 303 and landbanking it. So essentially, you'd get rid of some of the parking spots, and it would just be green space then?
That's correct.
My question, go ahead, sorry, sir.
It's along the east side of the property, so it'll be this bank of parking along the east side.
It's 50 cars, it's around 50 cars.
So you guys just got done saying, you know, you could see about 500 people on a Thursday, and if we're taking that parking from 303 to, you know, maybe to 50. I know multiple people carpool and whatnot, but do you think that'd be an issue, or you think that'd be okay?
Usually for the cars, usually they come through the whole day, the 500. So and every time, you have almost like 150 to 200 people on the property, so.
Great, and then in addition to that question, was there any concerns about additional green space from the southern portion of the building to those southern portions of the homes, Mr. Toramina? Any additional buffering, or what was that buffering for now?
I think there's about 10 or 15 feet between properties, and I will point out that the Sri Sirti Sai Baba owns both of the adjacent houses to the south. So they own these two properties directly south of the temple.
They're not going to demo those, they're going to keep them?
No, we're keeping them right now. And from where the detention is, we're keeping all the trees, and we're taking that little area, and we're providing our above-ground detentions so we don't interfere with the trees, but at the same time, meeting the requirements for the detention part.
And then along the eastern portion of the property, right now, there's a cyclone fence. Are you guys going to keep that fence with the properties to the east, or what are you doing with that? Are you adding some other kind of fencing?
No, we're keeping it, yes.
You're not adding any, any...
Landscaping.
Landscaping?
Yes.
Pine trees, or what are you guys adding along that buffer?
I think it's on the plan. It shows we have, we're putting trees wherever the, between, by city requirements, wherever it's required by... And actually, we're adding a lot of extra landscaping on the property, especially also on the street sides, on both sides, and we're creating a nice fence, like low fence with iron work, and we're making the entrance look nice. So actually, we're changing the whole site to make it attractive, good for the community, and good for the city of Livonia.
Very good. My last question was about the height of the dome. I know Mr. Toramina mentioned about comparing this dome to the St. Mary's. However, the elevation is a grade of St. Mary's is a little different than your location. Was there any consideration maybe lowering the dome at all? Could you go any lower? This is a number you really need to be this high?
Usually because the shape of it, where the dome is sitting, it's actually, we do have the, this is the highest part of the building. So dome itself is only 30 feet, but we put in it on the highest point. So if we make it smaller, it's going to look funny with the other two domes on the side of it. So we like to keep it if we can, yes.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donavich. Mr. Morgan, and then Ms. Toye.
Yeah, I just had a question. I think Councilman Donavich may have covered it. Mr. Toramina, what is the distance between the building and the property to the south? I know you said they own that, but what do, because my computer froze up, so I can't see the plans very well. I'm just looking for the distance.
I don't have a dimension on this plan, but the, well, first of all, the front of the temple will approximate the rear of the house immediately to the south. And that distance you figure?
It's around 44 feet, maybe.
Well, no, the, it's, this driveway is probably 24 feet. You probably have 15 feet and another 10 or 15 feet here, so it's probably closer to the actual house, probably 50 to 60 feet.
50 to 60.
So like I said, my system here froze up, but I, and I can't exactly see.
The house is difficult to see.
Is there a roadway going back there? Is there a roadway between there? So emergency vehicles can get back there or anything like that? Because I'm just kind of wondering if there's enough room for that, or is that just green space, or is that just?
No, this is a drive. So there is 100%, or there is 360-degree circulation around the temple building.
Okay, I'm sorry, I can see that now. I mean, like I said, my computer froze up, but, okay. So what was the distance you said?
Well, if you asked what's the separation between the proposed temple and the adjacent house to the south, I'm estimating that to be 60 feet.
Okay, and you said 44?
I mean, I'm just, was counting, but I didn't see the numbers.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
Councilwoman Toye?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, to the petitioner, a few questions. I'm not real familiar totally with culture, but help me understand, do you have certain celebrations at certain time of the year where we can expect more traffic or more activity at the center?
Yeah, we do. Like usually, as I said before, right, our main service day is Thursday, but we do have five major events throughout the year, spread around, you know, like one in February, July, like we have about five. And we do get a little bit more crowd for those days. And typically, we get about 1,000 people. And once again, they're spread out from throughout the day between 9:00 in the morning goes on until 9:00 in the afternoon.
So help me understand, how would you handle the traffic? Would you rely on our police department or our traffic people to come out and do that? Or do you guys hire somebody when you get into these bigger activities?
Good question. Our warranties manage it. And we've been, we're already operating temple currently in the old building, and our warranties do manage all the traffic, you know, during the, these five major events.
Okay, so you guys do it, is that, am I clear?
We manage it, yes, yeah.
Okay.
We hardly bank on the city of Livonia police.
Oh, okay, um, okay. Where are you currently located temple-wise?
It's the same, maybe Mark can show it. Same location.
Oh, it's on the same property?
Yeah, it's the same property.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that, okay.
Yeah.
Do you operate a school out of there as well? Any kind of school or educational facility or?
We do offer classes.
Do you?
I wouldn't call it a school, but we do have Sunday classes.
Oh, nice, okay. And are you open, like, would it be open seven days a week, do you know?
Right now, yes, we are open all seven days a week.
Okay.
But, you're talking about school?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The temple itself?
Temple itself is open seven days a week.
Seven days a week?
Yes.
Okay, what are your hours usually?
On weekdays other than Thursday, like we open at 8:30 in the morning.
Wow.
We close around 12:30.
Sure.
And once again, at 5:00 to 9:00 o'clock.
So you have a full staff there?
We have a full staff, yes.
Oh, that's great, okay. And any outdoor activities? Are you providing any gazebos, picnic tables? Do you have like a festival outside, or, you know, St. Mary's has their big festival. Italian-American club, we're kind of quiet. We play bocce ball and that's about it. So, you know, I just wondered.
We do have a major festival in July.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, we do invite maybe all of you to come and participate.
Yeah, that'd be fun, okay. And let's see, so you do serve?
I want to say one thing, though.
Yeah, go ahead.
We offer classes, and these classes are not necessarily religious. One is for, you know, toastmasters, speaking, public speaking.
Oh, yeah.
Right, it is open to everybody in Livonia.
Okay.
And also, we offer for math volunteer, for all the kids. So once again, it's open to all the kids in Livonia. So anybody who wants to participate, please do.
Can somebody rent a room there? So if a community group in Livonia, do you rent out any of your facility or your rooms?
Right now, we are limited with space, so we are not renting.
You don't have, okay.
But in a new facility, our plan is to rent.
Do you prepare foods like for lunches or dinners where the public comes in, or no?
We do, we do. So every Thursday, we offer free food to all our devotees.
Oh, okay.
Who are, it's just not devotees, who are attend the temple.
Yes.
And similarly, on all these, all these five major events I mentioned, we offer free food to everybody.
And help me understand, would this be kind of a regional thing where you're invited, where you have a lot of different people coming from a lot of different cities and communities around? Not only Livonia, but other places as well?
See, like in Christianity, I have different faiths.
Yes, sir.
So even in Hinduism, we have different faiths.
Yes.
And our, like what we call as Baba, right? There is one temple in Columbus, the nearest temple, and there's one in north of Troy and Rochester.
Yes.
And there are a lot of people who come from all around the other states too, including Indiana, Ohio, because they feel associated with this temple.
My last question would be, sir, if I may.
Sure.
Have you contacted any of the neighbors that are maybe across the street or behind you? Has anybody made any comment to you about anything? Do you know?
We, we actually, that's a good question. Since we moved in 2008, every holiday season, we actually distribute gifts to our neighbors.
Oh, nice, great. How far do you go? Oh, never mind.
It's only the two streets, because we can't walk too long.
That's okay.
Yeah, just Maplewood, and I don't know the...
You know how politicians are.
I'm like, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for sharing all that with us. I really appreciate it. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Jolly?
Mr. President, I'd like to offer an approving motion.
Consent a regular.
I'd like to put that on the consent if there's no objection from my colleagues.
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavich?
I've got a few more questions. Mr. Toramina, what happens to the space where the existing building is at right now when they demo that? What is going to be, what's going to fill that space after it's demoed? So as of right now, that space will just be grass, green space?
Yes, yes.
But is there any future plans right now to do anything with the property, or not yet?
No.
Not yet, no, okay, great.
Our focus is to build the temple today, then we'll think about after.
Sure, after you figure out the money situation, yeah. Mr. Toramina, since we're talking about that space, and you mentioned the Planning Commission, in my opinion, rightfully minimized from the five years to two years. When, how do we enforce that, that demo process? And/or is it through certificate of occupancy? Or how do we, as a city, make sure that they fulfill their obligation to demo that building? Because right now, it's, you know, it's not nearly as beautiful as your guys' proposed building is going to be. So just want to make sure that gets done and how that mechanism is in place.
Well, probably the most effective means of assuring that would be the bond that would need to be posted for the new construction.
Is that bond proportionate to the level of cost, I guess, right? I mean, it's not a $100 bond, right?
No, that's, that, those outstanding items at the time of occupancy are determined by the inspection department. I can't tell you what that would be, but it should be commensurate with the cost of constructing or demolishing the building. It's usually in the form of a letter of credit or maybe even cash bond.
I just hope there's some assurances there, because I don't want, I know you guys are building a beautiful place. I just want to make sure that is demoed after the fact.
Absolutely, but you're asking if we can make it three years instead of two years? If there's a possibility, just to finalize between the basements and the first level?
I'm comfortable with two years.
Can I make a, my humble request, right? So right now, our plan, and we have enough finances to build the first floor and have an unfinished basement. That's the reason we are requesting more time. So it's based on the finances. So yeah, definitely, we're asking for unlimited time as soon as we finish the basement. We wanted to demolish the, because we'll not have classrooms in the new temple. We'll continue to use the classrooms in the old temple. So that's the reason we are requesting a little longer time. If we can make it in the first year, our plan is to go in, in full, one shot. It all depends upon the finances, funding, and the whole other criteria.
Mr. Toramina, when does the clock start for them, so to speak?
The issuance of a temporary certificate of occupancy for any portion of the new structure.
And the Planning Commission recommended two years.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Anything further from Council? Councilman Biedzinski?
I think it is a beautiful temple. It'll be a great asset to our community, looking forward to coming in July for the festival. And I pulled up Google satellite just to get a better idea of the footprint. And I know that there's trees on the back. Are, where the water basins will be, will they be removing some of those trees?
Actually, we're putting the water basin around the trees. We're not touching it.
Okay, I thought that's, I just wanted to make sure, because if you're going to be getting closer to residents, having standing water could be a concern.
We're keeping all the trees in the back, and that's why the water basin, they take the shape of the, around the trees. So that's why we kept them.
That's what it looked like. I just wanted to confirm, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further from, Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Toramina, the demolition, what you had said. So once they get the certificate of occupancy, so I just wanted to clarify this for myself. The, sorry.
Sorry.
What?
I'm going to take this away from here.
So the, the building could take roughly, let's, let's just, I'm just guesstimating, maybe a year to build. Then they get the certificate of occupancy. And then the clock starts ticking to demolish the other one. So it could technically be three years from that time that they started, okay? Is that correct?
Under the scenario you just laid out, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so if the build takes a little bit longer and then they get that certificate of occupancy, it could potentially be a longer period of time, correct? If it takes a year and a half to build, it, okay, so.
That's correct. The temple will remain at least two years after they take occupancy of the new building.
Okay, so it's a very long, it could be a very long period of time?
Yeah, I would say, yeah. The build-out on something like this is probably 18 months, I would think.
Okay, okay, thank you. That clarifies it.
Anything further from council? Anything further from the audience? Seeing none. You do have an approving motion on consent, so if you'd like to join us on, I believe, March 11th, you can. But the matter is all but assured to pass at this point. Again, just from my purview, I want to thank you guys for expanding. I know you guys have been partners in the community, and then learning the stories that you guys brought up is awesome. You know, bringing gifts and integrating to the neighborhood. That shows, you know, that's what Livonia is. We had in the first meeting, Do It For Denny was a nonprofit. It just shows the community impact, so I appreciate you guys picking Livonia and growing, and we wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, on that, we are going to move on to item number two. You guys are all good.
I think this is the first time we've gotten applause after a presentation.
Hey, we'll take it, thank you. Listen.
Mark it out.
Council president, or the former council president was ready to grab the gavel. I was taking it in, so thank you all. Have a good night.
Good night.
I don't think anybody clapped when I grabbed the gavel.
Okay, so number two is a waiver petition from the Planning Commission. Petition 2024-01-02-02 submitted by Tizio Architects on behalf of United Landscape requesting a waiver use approval to operate a special trade contractor's yard that includes an outdoor storage of landscaping equipment and materials at 12933 Farmington Road. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. This item is before you because the use as a special trade contractor requires outside storage of the zoning also because it's M1 light manufacturing. This site actually includes portions of, well, one site and a portion of a second site, 12933 Farmington Road, which is two parcels south of the DPW property. That site is about just under two acres in size, and then a portion of the adjacent property, 12911 Farmington Road, which adds another half acre to the site. Both, both properties, as I indicated, are zoned M1. This site has 100 feet of road frontage. It's about 850 feet deep. United Landscape leases the property at 12933 Farmington, including the building, and then they lease the rear 200 feet of the property at 12911 Farmington Road. The building is used by United Landscape for offices and other administrative functions, as well as storage and warehousing. It's the rear of the property is the reason for the waiver use. There, there are, there is outside storage. This outside storage consists mostly of landscape materials, as well as trucks and trailers associated with the landscape business. There's parking for employees, both in the front and the back of the building. The areas where they store most of the materials related to the landscaping business are at the extreme westerly portion of the, of the site at 12933 Farmington Road. There's a dumpster directly behind the building. This is an area that the Planning Commission wanted addressed with a, an enclosure, which the petitioner has designed and included as part of their proposal. Additionally, they would like to see fencing around the entire perimeter of the outside storage area, which is a condition of the approval. And then lastly, there is a small salt dome on the property for which the Planning Commission is recommending that they receive the necessary permit for that. commission is recommending that, uh, they receive the, the necessary permit for that. Other than that, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is an item, uh, reviewed by the planning commission and recommended for approval. Now answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Tormina. Um, is the, the neighbor to the north, the two doors down, or two doors up, are they, uh, in agreement to this?
I don't think they have filed a, uh, a petition, a protest petition yet.
Counsel? Sorry, that was my cheesy dad joke.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jolly.
I'll offer an approving for consent if there is no objection.
Gee, that's great.
Do we have anything further from council?
I was looking forward to hearing from Mr. Tizio, though.
Yeah, do you just wanna, you got an approving on consent, how do you wanna play this one?
I think he presented it so well through the documentation and explanation.
Just for you, bonjour, je suis.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I want that accurately reflected in the mentions.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Mr. Tizio, we, we love and you do great work in our community forever, and just like you said during meetings, you love Livonia, and that is very true, so thank you for all you do. Um, you have an approving on consent, you can hang out with us next, uh, on the eleventh if you want, but you don't have to. Moving on to item number three, which is a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve renewal of contract with a sole source provider. This comes to us from the Division of Police for a three-year agreement with Motorola Solutions from budgeted funds. Hello, sir?
Good evening, President McCullough, members of City Council, Captain Eric Mark out here on behalf of Chief Kralowski. Yes, so the, uh, the police department is requesting a waiver of the formal bidding process and a renewal of our contract with Motorola. Motorola is a sole source provider that provides hands-on customer service support for our public safety radio system, which includes a twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day support center to manage service requests, track cases, and dispatch repair teams when necessary. This service agreement provides for inference, structure, repair, and/or replacement of equipment, technical support to answer questions and resolve problems, and provides network preventative maintenance, uh, for, and testing. This contract includes a four percent per year increase for the next three years and will end April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. The funds are budgeted in the public safety communication funds, uh, for this purpose. And with that, I can take any questions if you have any.
Awesome, thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to offer an approving on consent.
You have an approving on consent? Um, again, uh, will, anything else from the audience? Anything else from council on this item? With that, you got an approving on consent, thank you for joining us, and have a great rest of the evening.
I'm gonna stick around for a couple more, I think.
They, oh, there we go, all right, we're going, uh, number four, which is a request to waive the formal bidding process and authorize the purchase of one, um, well, how do I say that?
Leica.
Leica. Uh, GS one-eight-T GNSS system and software through the MyDeal State of Michigan contract. This comes to us, again, from the, uh, Division of Police, to replace the current opinion that is out of warranty and at end of life from budgeted funds. Cheers.
That is correct, sir. Uh, so, for this item, we are requesting to waive the formal bidding process and use the MyDeal, as you stated, uh, the State of Michigan contract bid pricing to purchase a Leica Global Navigational Satellite System. Uh, the, the requested equipment, in layman's terms, is a highly accurate surveying antenna and data collector. This equipment is the industry standard and is used by the vast majority of agencies within the country for crash scene documentation. This equipment brings significant technological advances, is user-friendly, and can be easily learned by new officers assigned to the Traffic Bureau. This equipment does not require advanced specialized training to operate, it requires only minimum setup and can be quickly, uh, can quickly document a scene, reducing road closure times. Funds for this system have been budgeted in the general budget and will, and will replace current equipment that is out of warranty and end of life.
Thank you, counsel. Um, Councilman Jolly?
So you gave a good explanation, but in, in very layman's terms, this is like a surveying instrument that determines distances and things of that nature after an accident has occurred for the reporting mechanism, correct?
It's a, it's a poll that officers can use when they're on, on scene of a traffic accident, uh, investigating a traffic scene, and it provides measurements, um, and information that they can use, uh, to reconstruct the scene.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that, and I think it's, it's absolutely necessary and it's useful. I just don't, I would just wanna be clear there because I don't want people to hear surveillance and all that kinda stuff and then get spooked by that.
Right. No, nothing with surveillance, this is just a, um, a, a poll, and it's, it's used, yep, correct.
Thank you, sir. I'll offer an approving for consent.
Counsel, anything further? Seeing none, anything from the audience? Seeing none. Your matter is approved on con, on consent. We will move on to item number five, which is a que, a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve renewal of a sole source professional services agreement. This comes to us from the Division of Police for two years with the Michigan Police Legal Advisor Group from budgeted funds. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Deputy Chief McDermott, and I'm just gonna introduce items five and six tonight. Uh, the first one, item five, the police department is requesting authorization to renew and extend the current sole source professional services agreement with Mr. Brett Namchov. He's an attorney with the Michigan Police Legal Advisor Group. The legal group is the only law firm in the state that provides this unique legal training that we are utilizing currently. They consult and advise on a narrow and specific, um, group of legal aspects of police policy, practice, administration, as well as constitutional law. We believe there's no attorney that matches Mr. Namchov's credentials, his Swedish services, and his practical experience as a police professional, lawyer, educator, and police legal advisor. Over the past year, Mr. Namchov has provided us with hundreds of hours of training to the police department. He provided numerous written legal updates and training bulletins for the officer's development. He also provided over a hundred hours of in-person training sessions to our employees over the course of the past year. Hundreds of questions were asked and answered during those training sessions. Some of the topics included deadly force and less lethal force law, constitutional police use of force, practical application of recent case laws, and civil liability awareness. This coming year, he's going to focus on constitutional search-at-seizure, practical application of recent case law, and police legal decision-making. The expenditure will utilize budgeted funds and will extend the current contract pricing for an additional two years.
Thank you, counsel. Mr. Jolly?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Chief, I remember when this came up two years ago, and we had a lot of questions at that time, and we asked a lot of questions of, uh, Mr. Bernier in regards to how this would, uh, complement his, uh, his areas of, uh, advice or discretion in regards to, uh, what you're doing. Um, I'm glad to see that it's back, it sounds like it's been a good experience. Um, I think it's a novel, it was novel at the time. My only question is, before I offer an approving, how many departments around us are utilizing his services, just out of curiosity?
There, there is a number of departments around us, including some larger ones like Lansing and Grand Rapids, Canton, um, and this has been just now for one year, we've done this. Uh, we're planning on extending it now for two, um, and there's been no conflict between him and the city attorney, they're getting along very well.
I'm sure we would've heard about it if there was. Um, all right, I'm happy to offer an approving on consent, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, anything further? Seeing none, anything from the audience? Seeing none. That item is approved on consent. We'll move on to number six, which is a request to extend the contract with Ollie Brothers Incorporated Division from the Police for a period of two years with a four percent increase in order to supply police department uniform, uniforms from budgeted funds. Chief?
Again, yes, we're just requesting authorization to renew and extend the current contract that we have with Ollie Brothers and have had, uh, for the past several years. We wanna extend that for a two-year period. Um, with that extension, there'll be a slight four percent increase to the per-unit pricing of the items in the contract, um, and that contract just expired back on December thirty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, so this new extension would take us through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. Um, I'm just gonna say, the last several times this went out to bid, Ollie Brothers was the only bidder, and therefore there was no real, uh, competitive advantage for the city. Uh, I don't anticipate anyone else bidding on this. Again, there's only a few authorized uniform vendors that supply the, um, types of uniforms that we require, uh, in the state, and they're in some pretty distant areas, Lansing, Troy, downtown Detroit, and some items could possibly, uh, come from a shop out in Milford, but, uh, that would be it. Ollie Brothers has been the police department's uniform vendor since nineteen seventy-four, and is the only authorized local vendor who can service our uniform demands and tailoring, et cetera, uh, for a department in a cost and time efficient manner. They've done so without fail for many years.
Mr. Chair?
I got Councilman Donavich, and then I'll go to you.
Oh, right ahead.
Councilman Donavich.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks Deputy Chief for being here, and thank you, sir, for being here. Um, you already hit on it in some of my research while getting ready for the camp, uh, getting ready for the, tonight's meeting. Like you said, the, Ollie Brothers almost ex, and is a sole source provider, um, they're the local provider, they've been doing a good job for many years, and actually, I think, probably getting a better deal by not going out to bid and, uh, by having this, uh, smaller increase, so I'd like to offer an approving on consent, there's no objection from my colleagues.
We have an approving on consent. Councilman Montoy?
Uh, I, I'd just like to echo those comments, um, not chief, but deputy chief, right? Um, no, I, you know, John and his team over there are, are just outstanding, this should almost be a housekeeping item, they've done so many great things for our community, so thank you for bringing them forward, and, you know, I'm excited that this is on consent as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I think my colleagues should have to take a field trip over there.
Yeah.
Experience, uh.
Cool. Maybe I'll get a uniform, too. Yeah.
I have done it less times than you, I'm sure, but I've done it as well.
Well, we have an approving on consent. We are going to move on to item number seven. Well, hang on, really fast, I'll go to the audience. Did you guys have anything on item number six? All right, thank you. Um, number seven is a request to waive the sealed bid process and authorize the purchase of nine marked and unmarked police vehicles using, uh, the State of Michigan MyDeals Cooperative Bid Pricing. This comes to us from the Division of Police from budgeted funds. The floor is yours again.
Yes, sir, for, so for our last item, uh, we are requesting a waiver of the sealed bid process to purchase nine replacement vehicles utilizing State of Michigan Cooperative Bid Pricing. This is part of our scheduled annual replacement of fleet vehicles using various bids and specifications from vetted participating vendors. The police department will purchase both marked and unmarked replacement vehicles from budgeted funds. The specifications of the vehicles are described in the council package in front of you, and with that.
Thank you. Councilman Morgan?
Yeah, I'll offer an approving on consent.
Thank you. Uh, counsel, anything further? Anything from the audience? You're all set on consent? Thank you for joining us, gentlemen.
Yep.
We'll move on to item number eight, which is a request to approve budget adjustments for the fiscal year ending on November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. This comes to us from the Department of Finance. Good evening.
Good evening. A little shorter. Um, my name is Connie Campala, I'm the chief accountant for the city of Livonia, and I'm standing in for our finance director, Mike Slater. Um, I'm before, I am here today to request an approval for our final budget adjustments in order to close our books for fiscal year twenty-three, and to be with compliance with the State of Michigan Budget Act. There's only one budget adjustment that we're asking for, uh, this year, and it's from the police department, uh, to cover medical expenses that exceeded estimated costs, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Chair, I'll offer an approving.
Uh, consent or regular?
Um, consent.
Consent it is.
Yes, sir.
Anything further from council? Seeing none? Anything from the audience? Seeing none? You have an approving on consent.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
All right, number nine is a request to authorize an appropriation and expenditure. This comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation for the emergency repair of multiple breaks in the waterline feeding the Clement Circle Pool and Bath House from budgeted funds. Mr. Davis from the Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Council President McCullough, Ted Davis representing Parks and Recreation.
See what I did there?
Yeah, I did. We're asking for approval for an emergency repair waterline. Uh, DeAngelo Brothers would do the work. Uh, this is an existing city contractor that we've used many times for different projects. Obviously, uh, time is of the essence here. Yesterday, we got a taste of it, but it'll be somewhere around the corner, uh, soon enough, and we just need to get this waterline repaired. Uh, there's, at this point, there is no service to the bathhouse or to the pool, so we do need that repaired.
Mr. President? Mr. Donavich?
Thank you, Mr. President, thanks, Mr. Davis, for being here. Uh, actually, about a month ago, maybe, I saw Mr. Davis and our city engineer, assistant city engineer, Mr. Lear, they're out there in a gloomy eight-thirty, nine o'clock in the morning poking around, and that is my backyard, so I had to investigate, and I saw DeAngelo Brothers out there, and, and they were Johnny on the spot. For people that don't know, there's been some investment recently in Clement Circle, there is, uh, a new parking lot being added and what have you, so, um, it's much needed, and I think naturally we have to make sure our amenities are working over there, so I'd like to offer an approving on consent, there's no objection from my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Donavich. Anything further from council? Seeing none? Audience? Seeing none? Mr. Davis, you got an approving on consent, go get that fixed.
Thank you very much.
Um, moving on to item number ten, which is a request to approve contract extension. This comes to us from the Department of Public Works Forestry Division. This is in order to, uh, complete the remaining inventory for the city-owned tree audit and update the inventory data sp, database from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore, how are you?
Evening, counsel, Doug Moore, Department of Public Works. Counsel, about a year ago, the department was here asking for an expenditure to update our treekeeper inventory program. Uh, at the time, we approximated forty-five thousand tree planting spaces in the right of way. In actuality, it was forty-eight thousand, a little over forty-eight thousand, fifty-two spots. We need ten thousand nine hundred dollars to pay that bill. Uh, the money is coming from the MEDC grant that the city received, that, that is paid for the treekeeper program, so there really isn't even an expense to the city funds.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Vice President?
Thank you. Um, I recently had the, uh, opportunity to meet with the Tree Committee and learn quite a bit about all this program, and it, it's, it's a great program, we're really keeping our title as a Tree City here in Livonia, so I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent.
Thank you.
You have an approving on consent? Anything further from council? Audience? Mr. Moore, and we'll go on to, I assume that you have eleven as well?
I do.
All right, so number eleven is a request for the authorization to waive this, uh, sealed bid process and purchase two trailer-mounted leaf vacuums through the MyDeal state, uh, procurement process from the Public Works Division, uh, from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore?
Nothing to make you think about leaves falling off of trees. Uh, we are looking to purchase two leaf suckers, um, these, sorry, leaf vacuums.
They're gonna go in as suckers after a minute.
Yeah, um, these are being purchased through MyDeal. They are $76,583.48 each, for a total of $153,166.96. Purchased from Bell Equipment through the MyDeal Program.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Counsel? Vice President Tashnik?
All right, thank you.
And then all of us.
No, I was just going to say, I really wanted to offer an approving on consent for a super sucker.
That's what we're hoping. Well, you got an approving on consent. Anything else from council? None? Audience? None? Or should I say, audience? Okay, none. We're going to move on to item number 12, which is a request to approve the Alliance of Rouge Communities, the ARC Annual Assessment for 2024 from the Public Works Division in the amount of $37,235 from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore?
Lastly, these are our annual ARC dues. Livonia is part of the Alliance of Rouge Communities. Almost all of the communities in this area that make up the Rouge River watershed participate. The ARC helps us en masse. They help write grants. They are helping us full-scale with our MS4 stormwater permit with the State Eagle Department. They investigate issues for us. Our, our personnel can be used for more appropriate work. And our executive director does the work for us through the ARC dues.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Counsel? Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I'll offer an approving on consent.
Anything further from council? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. That concludes the study. Any audience communication? I'll just say, I hope this has been impactful for your research and learning about all things local politics, so thanks for joining us again. Any closing remarks from council? Before I hand it off to Councilman Montoy to say something for the closing remarks? So I can safely show seven, and it's yours.
Motion to adjourn.
Do you have anything fun, like, you said something before, we're just going to go with it? Let's say, "Good night, Livonia."
I don't know.